...a business from Council President, no public hearings. Second reading, an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title III for the pilot. First reading, an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title X for handicap parking. Resolution one, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve award of contract with National Auto Fleet Group. Five, approve professional service agreement with Power DMS. Six, approve award of contract with Morfo. Seven and eight, approve award of contract with National Auto Fleet. Nine, approve request for use of city property at Albany Street. Ten, approve request for use of city property at Recreation Park. Eleven, approve person-to-person transfer of liquor license. Twelve, approve request for street closing at George Street. Thirteen, approve request for street closing at College Avenue. Fourteen, approve request for use of city property at Monument Square Park. Fifteen, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2022. Sixteen, authorize resolution for the City of New Brunswick to enter into an agreement with the County of Middlesex. Seventeen, approve appointment of council. Eighteen, release of site performance guarantee to O'Brien Investments. Nineteen, authorize tax collector transfer several tax, several overpayments and tax utilities. Twenty, approve authorization to participate with the Borough of Highland Park for the Division of Recreation. Twenty-one, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure for sky-high erectors. Twenty-two, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and lane closure for public service. Twenty-three, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure for Kenville United. Twenty-four, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of a grant agreement. Twenty-five, approve award of contract with S and G Paving. Twenty-six, approve resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of New Brunswick and the LRWP. Twenty-seven, approve request for use of city property from Sigma Delta Tau. Twenty-eight, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero six one nine three eight with USA Architects. Twenty-nine, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance with Langin Engineering. Thirty, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero five two one two one with Middlesex County Office of Arts and History. Thirty-one, approve resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of grant with Middlesex County Office of Arts and History. Items for discussion by council. COVID update, public comments. The next meeting is Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at five thirty PM. The meeting will now come to order. Will the court please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Fleming. Okay, Councilmember Fleming will be attending the meeting late today. Council Vice President Escobar is absent. Council President Secora Ludwig.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board, and posted in the bag vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Additionally, a forty-eight hour notice of the time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, as is required by law.
The City Council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing a teleconferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the forty-eight hour notice. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted. During the public comment periods, those who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name, then called upon to speak one time and for no longer than a five minutes during each public comment portion of the meeting. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired. Public meeting assistance accessed in the call-in number should call City Hall at seven three two seven four five five zero zero seven.
Thank you. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and bow your head in a moment of silent prayer to reflect on the unimaginable suffering of the people of the Ukraine and the senseless sorrowful destruction at the hands of an insatiable dictator. May their patriotism, resolve, and courage keep them safe as they fight to protect their nation and seek to defend the opportunity of peace and freedom. May all forces who come to their aid be guided alongside them by the hand of God to safety. Thank you.
Both should approve the minutes.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Egan. Council President Secora Ludwig.
Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. Now, I just have a few things I want to address from comments that were made at the last meeting. First, Mr. Cradaville was looking for information about prob, which is not a city-run entity, but I was able to jump on the website, and I did find the information. I was able to direct, I was able to direct Mr. Cradaville to do the same. He was also seeking information about the crime mapping system, and once again, I was able to jump onto that system, and there's an emboldened disclaimer right on there, and I'll read it verbatim. It says, "The New Brunswick Police Department is in the process of updating our crime mapping site. It is our goal to provide clarity and conformity when reporting crimes within the city. We are working with the crime mapping software company to report incidents in real time instead of a seven-day delay currently in place. Additionally, we will be adding a shooting icon that will identify shootings within the city separate from aggravated assaults. Please be patient while we make these upgrades to better serve our community." And then lastly, Ms. Moore was asking some questions about the law of self-defense. I did send her an email, but it got kicked back to me, so I just want to read that email into the record and for her information if she's listening. As to your inquiry during the public comment portion of the meeting in relation to the law of self-defense, in New Jersey, I believe this is found in two thousand thirteen revised statute type two C, the New Jersey Code of Criminal Justice, section two C, colon, three dash four, parentheses, two thousand thirteen, universal citation, NJ revised statute section two C, colon, three dash four, two thousand thirteen. This will provide you with the appropriate legal information. Any guidance on interpretation of said statute shall be thought independently from this council, and I hope this information is helpful. Now, we have ordinances on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, chapter three point four zero, payment and lieu parking, chapter three point four zero, payment and lieu parking pilot. At this time, we're preparing to open the hearing to the public on this ordinance only for up to five minutes, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z. E through H. I through L.
Unmuted.
Letters Q through T.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville, I have you.
Thanks.
Hi, I think something's wrong with the system due to where it froze. I said Danielle Moore as well.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council?
Marge Kerber.
Okay, Ms. Kerber.
Do you hear me?
On the ordinance.
Yeah. I'm not sure where we are in the, in the agenda, but.
We're on the ordinance.
Oh, okay. All right, then I'm gonna skip, um, no, okay, I'll, I'll stay on, thank you. I wanna, I wanna talk about the handicap one, thanks.
That's not on, that's not on the, that is not on for tonight. We're talking about ordinances on second reading.
The first reading?
It's on the pilot program.
Oh, okay, all right, then I'll, I will waive my five minutes, or whatever.
Okay, thank you. This will be the last call. A through Z, if you wish to speak on the ordinance only. The list is now closed. Madam President, the first speaker on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Cradaville. If you can please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record before you begin.
Yes, good evening, Madam President.
Muted.
Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L, um, in the second ward of New Brunswick.
Go ahead, Mr. Cradaville.
Yeah, I wanted to know about the pilot, uh, why you are changing things about it. It just got passed, uh, maybe a year or less, uh, in the past, and I see now it appears that you're trying to go after folks who aren't even trying to build anything, but just happen to have a, a pre-existing non-conforming situation. Uh, is that true? And, and if so, how much does the city expect to make hitting up everyone with that situation for twenty-five hundred dollars?
Uh, no, that, that's incorrect, Mr. Cradaville. This would be in the case of a pre-existing non-conforming youth. If a, if someone wanted to, say you have a two-family house, you want to make it a four-family house, and your two-family house fell under guidelines when there were no parking restrictions at the time, but now coming in and you want to build a four-family unit, say you would be required to have those two prior, so they would fall under the twenty-five hundred dollar guys because we didn't think it was fair, since they have not been doing anything illegal to, um, make those a five thousand dollar street. This is only if someone's going to develop and exacerbate what they already have. So it was a, a, uh, it was an equitable, um, resolution for everybody. We're not going after anybody. We're not compiling a list. This is when people come and they're going to be developed.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the, the other change is, is for what purpose? The, uh, uh, thing about conflicting standards?
The other change is, yeah, that, that's to capture anything that may change in the future with standards coming down from the state, just to make sure that we capture the standards that we have at our local level. We want to make sure that our laws are captured properly.
Okay, and so what does that mean? Does that mean that the lower standard will, will come into play, or the higher standard?
That means that the standards that we have in place for the pilot will be in place, which is, which is lower than our FIA standard, but if any law does preempt that in the future, it will revert back to the standards that we have authorized under the, under the pilot program.
Okay. Well, I guess those are all my questions on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Madam President, the next speaker on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. I apologize. Ms. Moore, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Hi, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, Somerset Street, M-O-O-R-E. Well, uh, my, now that I understand, you're trying to understand what, uh, what you said about someone making their, uh, a two-family house to a four, four-family, I, legally, I just don't understand how you're, you're really able to do that, and due to where I see that, how the city and the city inspection have been doing, doing a lot of illegal of, of this, I'm still just not understanding how that, that's a, able to be done, due to where, like I said, when looking for an apartment, you do see what, how, where you're saying allowing two, uh, two families to come, a four-family, where too many places are, and the city is, inspection is allowing it, but by law, you're not able to even make a living room into a bedroom, and how the, turning into, like I said, wow, a one-family house turning into two families. So I'm just curious, can you explain how, how that can be even done?
Absolutely. It has nothing to do, that was purely an example for the sake of an example, just to give Mr. Cradaville, it has nothing to do with a two-family to a four-family. It may be a building that has eight units, it would still have to go through the proper process of, of all of the applications and go before any board that it would need to go through. This is strictly for the pilot piece of it, for non-conforming.
Well, like, I'm, 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 I'm just glad you said what, what you said, due to where, like I said, it's already being illegally done, and like I said, I don't even see why you're putting this into order, with saying, like I said, from turning, for example, to a, a, a two-family into a four, four-family, due to where, like I said, it, it just sounds like a gimmick, something done on a sneak tip, and like I said, due to where I've been seeing too much of the sneakiness between, like I said, the inspection, when, and now what you allow to be done, due to where I just don't even see why, why this is even going through, is this, like I said, as a person, due to where the past two years, how, and plus, I know New Brunswick, 'cause I lived there over forty-five years, majority of these houses, how, what, you're legally turning, what, allowing, just like you said, where it can be a, a house, turning over to two families, turning the indoor portion to a bedroom, turning the living room into a bedroom. So like I said, for example, I don't even see why you're putting this into effect, regardless, due to where it's just impossible to do that, and like I said, the city is inspection, doing a lot of sneaky stuff, and the mayor and the city council shouldn't even be doing this, but thank you.
Just, just to clarify your point, Ms. Moore, again, this is not anything from a two-family to a four-family that has to do with parking, with projects that would need to be vetted. This is not for anybody who's doing anything illegal in the city at the moment. These may be buildings that were built back in whatever year, I don't even want to give you a year, because just say they were built back prior to our parking standards, and they're, and they are not doing anything illegal, because they have been built prior to that, and they may want to, um, make a bigger project, or they want to expand on something, and now this is a way to get them into compliance with the standards without putting an onerous burden on them and still being equitable within the city. That is what this is for. It has nothing to do with illegal houses from two families to four families. It's a completely different concept. But thank you for your comments. Do we have any other comments? Uh, Madam Clerk?
No other speakers, Madam President.
Move the ordinance.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming. Council President Secora Ludwig.
Now, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title X Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point two zero, Handicap Parking, Section ten point two zero point zero one zero, Schedule three nine, Parking Zones for Handicapped Persons, at one hundred Paulus Boulevard and ninety Wright Place.
Move the ordinance, setting down, eighteen twenty-two, at five thirty PM, same date to be advertised.
Second. Sorry.
Sorry.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Fleming. Council President Secora Ludwig.
At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolution for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, can you please prepare a list for us?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions only, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through B. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Letters Q through T. And U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council on the resolution? This will be the last call. A through Z, if you wish to speak on the resolutions.
Marge Kerber. Did you hear me?
Okay, Ms. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The list is now closed. Madam President, the first speaker on the list is Ms. Marge Kerber.
Muted.
Ms. Kerber, if you can please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record.
Sure. Marge Kerber, K-E-R-B-E-R, two Comstock Street, in, uh, two Comstock Street. Um, I have questions on a couple of these. You can hear me, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, my first, my first questions are about the contracts for the, um, Ford Maverick and the pickup trucks, uh, I think there's two or three of them, Ford Ranger, um, and, and I realize that this is done through a co-op, okay? Um, so I'm making the assumption that we're saving money by doing this, because I don't see, it doesn't appear that way, but I'm gonna make that assumption. But my question is, are we not even looking into having hybrid vehicles? Because none of these are showing any hybrids. And I would think that we want to do that.
Mr. Wallace, can you please tell us why these particular vehicles were chosen?
Yeah, um, the, uh, the two explorers are, are gonna be for supervisors, the Maverick will be for supervisor and maintenance. Uh, to be honest, we did have a couple of hybrid vehicles in the fleet, uh, several years ago. They do become, or they have been, I don't know if it's changed recently, but they do become very expensive to maintain, uh, issues with the batteries and such, uh, and, and a lot of times, they can only go back to the dealer for repair.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
But that's both to the environment.
Council President, may I assist on this as well?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Uh, Ms. Kerber, these are, are, um, trucks that are to be used in heavy-duty circumstances. Essentially, they're gonna be on-site. Um, the city does evaluate the, the purchase of hybrid and electric vehicles, and is doing so, um, as we go forward, but I think you're gonna find it's the best practice, in most governments, um, as well as, uh, most for-profit sector, that when you're dealing with heavy-duty vehicles that are on job sites, et cetera, hybrid and electric vehicles do not function as well as traditional power engines.
Okay, all right, I just established, um, just wanted to know that, and my next, my next question is, um, let me find it, it's for the mural at Recreation Park. Can somebody explain to me where that mural is going to be? At Recreation Park, is it gonna be on the ground? I mean, I don't see any place to put a mural, so that's my question.
Mr. Jones, are you on the line?
That's number, um. Number thirty.
I, I know, Mr. Jones.
The mural will be going on the, you hear me?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
The mural will go on the park facility.
Will go where? Oh, on the park facility, like one of the buildings there, like the restroom?
Yeah, there's only one building there, so it'll go around the entire building in the, on the park facility.
Okay, and it is for the reason of?
Uh, the city, the city partners with Middlesex County, uh, Paul Robinson. So the, the city, uh, has a mural program that it coordinates with the county every year, and so this is just, um, uh, another year in, that we were awarded the grant, and it would be a mural of Paul Robinson, um, on the actual facility in the park.
Okay, all right. I forgot, I forgot about that one building that was there. I only walk around that park like every other week. You would think that I would remember that, don't you? Okay, all right, thank you very much for the explanation, I appreciate it. I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do you have any other questions, Ms. Kerber?
That's it for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, the next speaker on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Mr. Cradaville, the floor is yours.
Yes, good evening once again, Charles Cradaville. I wanted some more information on Resolution sixteen. Um, this is the, uh, water main agreement with the county, I presume prompted by the, uh, you know, realignment of Spring Street. Can, what can you tell me about how this agreement works? Are New Brunswick taxpayers on the hook for any of these improvements? Is the county gonna handle it for us? Uh, what should we expect to happen?
The, the way I understand it is that this, this agreement will put the water main into part of the signal, um, improvement, which we already have the interlocal agreement that was made on July sixteenth. The cost will be borne by the city, but it's still more efficient than having to open the road up by ourselves, because all of the construction will still be going on, and we will pay the contractors through the county. And Mr. Shammy, did I leave anything out of that?
Uh, no, Madam Council President, I think you've covered it, and, uh, this is the more efficient way to do this, uh, uh, improvement to the water main, since the intersection will be under construction, uh, at this time.
Thank you.
Well, I would suggest that, uh, the main customer that's gonna be served by this is, uh, the Devco project, so why aren't they, uh, you know, gonna chip in?
I'm not your comment, Mr. Cradaville. Do you have any other resolutions you'd like to speak on?
Yeah, I mean, that was just a question for you.
I believe we're replacing the water mains throughout the whole city. I don't think it's dependent upon any particular development.
Well, uh, that's news to me, if all of the mains in the entire city are being replaced. Is that true? Can you ask the water director?
Well, maybe I, I misspoke. I thought that we've been replacing a lot of them. Mr. Wallace, have we been replacing a lot of the water mains throughout the city when the opportunity arises through projects?
Yeah, anywhere where we could get ahead of paving or, or, uh, other improvements, uh, trying to replace the mains.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that and, and agree that it makes sense. I'm just, uh, you know, considering, there's a developer that is, uh, proposing to build a project, they say is gonna be a, you know, three-quarters of a billion dollars, maybe, just maybe they could be asked to chip in for the, uh, infrastructure improvements that will support their, uh, massive development. Uh, have you, have you, have you thought about that? Do you think that, you know, you could ask them to chip in, or, or is that not something that you, uh, support?
But that's, I'm not sure who put this agreement in place, but the agreement is with the county, and it does not include the developer.
Right, I mean, you're about to put the agreement in place, you, that is, uh, being asked to prove it, and I'm, I'm suggesting that, you know, in the interest of the taxpayers of New Brunswick, it might make sense to ask this developer to chip in. Do you agree? Could you do that before you finalize this agreement?
I'm not sure that I agree or disagree, but then you'd have to use the same concept if you're gonna replace the water line in front of somebody's house, because the street is open, do you want to start charging the people who own the houses for it, too?
No, I don't think you have to use the same concept, because this is a No, I don't think you have to use the same concept because this is a completely different thing. This is a redevelopment area. This is a project that is public land. The Parking Authority owns it, and you are partnering with Devco on this project. So I think it's very fair to ask them to chip in for infrastructure improvements, don't you? Does that, am, am I, uh, you know, am I off-base here, or is that, is that, are you, are they not your partners in this project?
See, Mr. Shammy, can you explain the dynamics of this project, please?
Uh, I'm not quite sure, um, what Mr. Cradaville is asking for. Back to the water main. I mean, as Mr. Wallace said, this is an improvement to the water mains in that particular area. Obviously, it'll probably service that particular complex when it's ultimately built. But while the road is under repair and we're upgrading the signal, that's the appropriate time to do the improvement. And the city, historically and legally, has an obligation to repair and upgrade its infrastructure, and that's exactly what's occurring with this particular resolution.
I'll respectfully ask you to hold off on this.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cradaville. Madam President, the next speaker on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore. Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours. Ms. Moore?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, yes. I, I would like to, uh, continue with sixteen as well, with the water main project. Can you please tell me when this will be getting done?
Uh, I don't have a start date. This is just for the agreement to enter into it. This is not for the actual work or the contract. Uh, Mr. Wallace, do you have any information about that? About a start date for this project?
Um, in terms of the, uh, the water, uh, we're really not sure when it's gonna start. All I can say is the spring. Uh, right now, um, there's difficulty in obtaining, uh, the materials, uh, the pipe and the valves and such.
Thank you.
Well, hon- honestly, I, I would say, hopefully, I, I would say at least wait till the summertime due to where, I have to say, you have extremely too much construction going on and too many roadways that are being closed for the safety of pedestrians. Like I said already, even with you doing the lights, uh, doing this, changing the system over there, it is putting extremely too much at risk over there for pedestrians, uh, walking and all. And then one thing I would like to say, we, far as Somerset Street was disconnecting to and closing with all these roadways, with putting up the poles for this project as well, with the, with the cancer center. Due to where, wow, sad to say, I, I will say, thank you, Jesus, that, wow, that fire that was on Somerset Street was on, on the weekend due to where, what, if all these roads are, that, the same thing during the weekday was being closed off. Wow, the fire department emergency people wouldn't even be able to get through. I mean, you have, what, five streets in a row where, like I said, one-way, no, no, no turn.
Ms. Moore, what resolution are you speaking about right now?
I'm speaking about sixteen with the water main agreement where I said basically, uh, hopefully summertime when school is out, out, for one thing, and then that'll be less, less tra- tra- traffic may, maybe. But like I said, due to where you have extremely too many roads being closed off. And like I said, regard to that fire at two twenty-six Somerset Street. Luckily, it was on, well, what, on the weekend due to where, what, out of all, why I walked down today, out of all these roads, you have with them putting up, you can't be posed now. It, it's getting extremely difficult, and like I said, God forbid, pray, nothing happens again. But come on, you, you gotta start thinking about the safety of, of the road. How many are closed now over there? How many one-way streets now? Due to where, like I said, luckily, the fire department was on the right side for them to get to that fire, and they did a great job with putting it out. And like I said, you ought to start thinking about safety hazards as, as well, with too much construction going on at one time in a certain area. Also, I, I would like to speak on regards to, uh, the, the park, uh, but, uh, no, excuse me, yes. I think it's five, due to where I see something for, for, uh, shading, picking trees and all, a different type of equipment. But wow, do you even have enough workers now for the parks department? I see you buying equipment. But wow, due to where our, is this, there is still a shortage on workers for the parks department?
Mr. Drewless, is, is the department, um, fully operational, the parks department?
I would have to, to check our working rosters of employees, but, um, we have a set amount of employees in the budget. Um, we staff those as employees leave or retire. Um, the, the mechanization of parks by purchasing this equipment only makes the jobs, uh, the jobs for our employees more efficient, a little easier. Um, so in terms of the staffing in the parks, I'm actually at this moment, sorry.
Thank you. I can get that.
I don't, I don't find it making it easy, easy, due to where I have to say, all last year, what, you didn't see any trees getting trimmed, anyone tall where you can barely walk down some of these streets due to where, that was my point, where I see trees on here, due to where, what, a lot of your trees hasn't been trimmed. But wow, you'll find someone else who's not trimming their shrubs and bushes. But wow, the city is not taking their part and doing their, their, with, with their responsibility.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moore. Madam Clerk? Madam President, I have no more members of the public on the list. Thank you.
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Laura Ludwig.
Yes. And I have no comments to make this evening, but let me call the council. Um, Councilman Anderson, do you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
Just a reminder that, uh, a week from Sunday, March thirteenth, is daylight saving time. So please make sure you take your clocks and move them forward. That would be on March thirteenth, Sunday, Saturday into Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Egan, do you have anything you'd like to say tonight?
That was just time.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming, do you have anything you'd like to address tonight?
Uh, no.
Thank you. And now is, uh, Mr. Dubcaski on the line for a COVID update.
Good evening. COVID update for March second. COVID continues to wane locally and statewide. The best protection against COVID and its variants continues to be vaccinations. City of New Brunswick has two dedicated, dedicated pages on our website for COVID testing and vaccinations. Both pages can be viewed directly from the city website by navigating to COVID nineteen drop-down menu. For COVID testing, www.cityofnewbrunswick.org slash COVID testing. And for COVID vaccinations, www.cityofnewbrunswick.org COVID vaccines. We will continue to share our major COVID news via social media and our city website at cityofnewbrunswick.org. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment. From the... Unmuted. Person one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any member of the public wishes to address the council, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Kerber.
Okay, I have Ms. Kerber and Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Q, T. And letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z. The list is now closed. Madam President, the first speaker on the list is Ms. Marge Kerber. Thank you. Ms... Muted. Floor is yours for your comments.
Thank you very much. Um, my first comment is, um, I, a couple of months ago, I had, um, asked about a handicap spot on, uh, Kirkpatrick Street, a metered spot. Um, and I'd asked that it be repainted because it doesn't, you can't tell that it's really handicapped, okay? And I was assured that it would be taken care of. As of last week, it has not been taken care of. So my question is, can you give me any idea when it will be taken care of? So that's my first question. My second question is, um, there was a house on Sanford Street, okay, that was boarded up. And apparently, it was, it was bought, and, uh, they have fixed it up. It looks very nice, okay? I don't know what the house number is because there's no house number on the house. But the house next to it is thirty-two Sanford Street, okay? So me, it's not in this house, you know, it looks very nice except for the fact that all this construction debris is on the property. It's right next to the side porch. It's taking up the whole area on the side of the house, and it's been there for months. And I was under the, I was under the assumption, I could be wrong, that if you're doing construction, besides getting the permits and stuff, you need to have some way of getting rid of all your, all your, uh, debris. So anyway, that's my, that's my other question is, um, are they being asked to take care of this? Because it's getting worse. I mean, the pile is getting higher and higher. So, but that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kerber. I'll look into both of those and have an answer for you. Who's next, Madam Clerk? Madam President, the next speaker on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville. Thank you. Mr. Cradaville, the floor is yours for comments.
Yes, Madam Council President. I wanted to ask, does the mayor of the city have a public email address?
I don't have that information. I can try and get it for you for the next meeting.
Okay. I think, uh, you know, at a minimum, this should be a easy way for the people of the city to communicate with the mayor, and it doesn't appear that's in place. I, uh, saw the president of the country give a speech called the State of the Union last night. Is the mayor gonna give a State of the City address this year, or is that not important?
I can find an answer for you on that. Still, I, I'm not sure right now.
Okay, 'cause I think the State of the Union was delayed. It happened later in the year than it normally does. And I asked about this back in January, and it seems there's no indication the mayor intends to give any speeches. And, uh, indeed, has not given a State of the City speech since twenty nineteen, if I'm not mistaken. So it's now twenty twenty-two, and I think public deserves to hear from the mayor. Uh, is Burt Barron on the call tonight?
I believe he is.
Okay. Um, you know, you didn't mention this in your remarks, but we've been going back and forth since November now about this false statement that was posted to the website, and I still haven't gotten a straight answer. Can you please ask Mr. Barron who sent him the false statement that he then posted to the city website on November twelfth?
Mr. Cradaville, I have been asking for the information as well. So, uh, Mr. Barron, can you provide any more information about this to Mr. Cradaville and myself and the council this evening?
Uh, I, I can, uh, Madam Council President. Thank you and, and good evening. Uh, it was given to me by, uh, a member of the mayor's staff, the mayor's office.
Thank you.
And the name of that person?
Mr. Barron, do you have an answer to that?
Uh, uh, Madam President, I don't recall.
Thank you.
Wow. Wow. So he recalls that it was a member of the mayor's office. How many employees are there in the mayor's office?
I'm not sure. I can find out for you, Mr. Cradaville.
Can I count them on one hand? I mean, this is, this is absurd, that Mr. Barron works in an office with a half dozen people, let's say. He can't tell us which one of them it was that gave him this statement to post on the city website? Can you ask him? Did he receive it via email? Was it emailed to him?
Mr. Barron, do you have other information about this? I know, I mean, he, like I said, Mr. Cradaville, I've been asking for the information myself, and I, I have no way to get it other than through the same sources as you. And so, um, do we have any other information, Mr. Barron, how you received the information, or who gave it to you?
I'm sorry, uh, Mad, uh, Council President, what was the question again? I'm sorry.
Do you, do you recall how the information was given to you, how the article was given to you?
I don't.
Was it, okay. If you could please find out?
Yes, I, I will. I'm been looking into the issue, uh, on an ongoing basis, Madam President.
Thank you. And please get back to Mr. Cradaville. Do you see me and the council on anything?
Definitely will. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So the investigation continues. Um, I wanted to ask about the, uh, city vehicles. Um, I don't know if any of the DPW vehicles or take-home vehicles are, uh, you know, city employees permitted to take their vehicles to the Parks Casino in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania?
I will find out for you, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay. Um, uh, how about having meetings in-person again? I know at one point you mentioned you'd be updating us monthly on the efforts to return to in-person meetings. I don't believe we've gotten an update. Um, any plans at all to, you know, find a, find a place, like, say, the, the high school auditorium where the Board of Ed meets, or the county commissioners' meeting room, where the county commissioners meet, and having a in-person city council meeting for the first time in two years? It has been two years.
Mr. Cradaville, I will address these at the beginning of the next meeting. Who's next, Madam Clerk? Madam President, the next speaker on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore. Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours for comments.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, yes. First, I would like to start off, we're asking that please let the street light on the corner of Sedham and French Street be, try to fix the six immediately. That is a busy street. It is very dark there for someone's safety, especially with a car turning on the right. So please, French and Sedham Street, uh, by the corner store, where the opposite side, pl- please. I will say, thank you, like I said, that, that, thank you. It was good work of teamwork. Thank you to the New Brunswick Fire Department. Thank you to the Robert Johnson Rescue Squad. And I will say thank you to two officers, that, uh, S. Go Gomez, I know it's more than one Gomez. He was riding car nine thirteen, just to make sure we have the right match. To, uh, Officer Rodriguez, R. Rod- Rodriguez, he was driving car nine eleven due to where these two officers were on the first, on the scene to help the chief of the fire department. Isn't in the video, I happened to be right around the corner at the time. It was so, it ha- happened. But it was a good source of teamwork with putting the fire down, then also rescuing the, uh, the pet. One person was hurt, where I will say, I will, I had been speaking to the family. I will be doing a donation collection where you may see me outside on the street, and I pray that the police department doesn't bother me, you don't say anything to the other homeless and needy. I will be doing a collection donation to help the family out a- as well. Uh, I would like to say that thank you for even trying to send me, uh, uh, the, uh, email about what self-defense is. I, but my, that was my fault because where my system was full, and I had to get more storage. But I'm not trying to, I can look up what the law is myself, but I stay with New Brunswick Police Department. They don't follow the law. And like I said, due to where what is written, where it come out of your mouth as well, President Lo- Lo- Ludwig, saying, ooh, dislike the situation, ooh. It was, it wasn't a joke, right? I wouldn't dare grab when I said, ooh, am I allowed to grab tough officer one just because I like him? I wouldn't dare do it. But how immediately you told... I wouldn't dare do it, but how immediately you told me, no, you're not allowed to touch anyone, then tell me why does New Brunswick Police Department allow, and like I said, it is very disappointing where does New Brunswick Police Department respect the law orders? No, they do not, like I said, if I can't touch someone, why, why, what, four times this man was able to touch, touch someone else, and then the same situation when I said, what is self-resistance, like I said, ooh, I know, I, I can defend myself, I didn't hit this man back, was I say, wow, I'd be the one arrested, and wow, honestly, the situation, I will say thank you to Sergeant Lemmer, uh, Lemmerning and Detective Lopez, even though the situation with Detective Lopez putting a charge on my son, with a, with a fight at the school, which it wasn't fair, so I seen the police department again, and which I will be getting a lawyer to sue the school, it's not the police department, how, wow, four boys were suspended for a fight, but how that security only sent the video of my son where the boy pushed him and he hit him, so like I said, please, I think New Brunswick really needs to make, wow, if you're saying no one's allowed to put their hands on you, why is it once someone hits you, you hit them back, and then you're the one that get in trouble? But like I said, I will be following along to it against the Board of Education, because like I said, last night I will say, wow, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Caldwell, until you respect that all I do is try to help save people, safety rhythm, you will have the worst luck in the world to even put this situation only out of my, on my son, out of four boys that was involved, I have the video of the fight, but my son said, Mom, no, please do not turn the other guys in, which is on video with, uh, Detective Lopez as well, but like I said, wow, for that security at New Brunswick High School, to only send the videos that have charges pressed against my son, like I said, and I will say it again, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Caldwell, and that security where disrespected me before, you will have your day, and like I said, until you respect all I do is safety, making better people so no one ever have to go through much pain, but wow, this is the second situation, with you really just coming at me, and like I said, you will have the worst luck in the world, and I surely will say my prayers on it, that, wow, you two evil ones will do this. Like I said, I'm not taking my, in my, this situation out of on Detective Lo- Lo- Lopez, like I said, I thank her for telling me exactly what's happening, though, but with that school system, yes, you will have your day.
Thank, thank you for your comments, Ms. Moore, I did want to thank you also on the email address, 'cause you had given some good ideas, um, regarding the, uh, master plan, so I wanted to thank you for that, and thank you for the French Street light and all of your other comments tonight. Do we have any other speakers, Madam, uh, Clerk?
No, Madam President, we have no more speakers on the list.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Member Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Good night, thank you.